Earning her keep.
Look at you.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session. Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. We have come out of executive session. We have not discussed anything that was not listed on the agenda, but we will need to take action.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to turn the medical assistant tribune program at the RCDC Detention Center in Roswell County, its litigation to the New Mexico County's Grace Phillips and to report back to the commission on the per required basis. Does that sound good?
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much. No other action is necessary. Okay? Roger. Okay, moving on. Item five, informational items, presentation and discussion of IRB and project by Peter Kelton and Orsted team.
You can be here if you want, or you can if.
Might make it easier for me to stay here and leave the podium.
Thane can be up there if he needs to.
So, a lot of this is probably gonna, or I'll start off with introductions. My name is Peter Kelton. I'm an attorney with the Rhodey Law Firm, representing Roosevelt County. A lot of the information in these slides, you've already seen, or at least heard from the last meeting that I attended, but thought that it might be worthwhile to go over industrial revenue bonds again, just because there were a lot of questions about the structure, what's being accomplished, what isn't being accomplished, and might help in putting people at ease in terms of what is being asked of today. So, industrial revenue bonds are an economic development tool used widely across the state of New Mexico. They provide gross receipts, compensating, and property tax exemptions to qualified projects. Tens of billions of dollars have been issued in IRBs by various municipalities and counties across the state. Recent issuers for renewable energy projects include San Juan County, Grant County, Dona Anna County, Hidalgo County, Harding County, Quay County, and McKinley County. Our firm, the Rhodey firm, represents both issuers and developers across the state, and want to make clear that the bonds are not an obligation of the county. No money is being transferred from the county to the developer. The bonds represent an obligation of one arm of the developer to the other arm of the developer. It's an intercompany loan, if you will, and the county would not extend its credit or have any responsibility for the repayment of the bonds under any circumstances. So, again, industrial revenue bonds provide tax incentives, gross receipts, compensating, and property tax exemptions. In exchange for those tax benefits, the developer makes certain commitments to the issuer. These range in the form, can range in the form of payments in lieu of taxes, maintenance of project operations for a certain period of time, meeting certain spending requirements, and specifically for renewable energy projects, things like decommissioning obligations, road use and maintenance agreements, things of that nature, to put an issuer at ease that the developer is going to be a good member of the community and meet its obligations with respect to the county and taking care of things that the county cares about. So, what ends up happening for an industrial revenue bond transaction is that the developer transfers its interest in the project. So, it transfers title to real property, leasehold interests, and interest in equipment to the county. The county then enters into an arrangement where it leases the property, that same property and those property interests back to the developer, and the developer, as part of that agreement, makes those commitments that I referenced earlier to the county, to pay payments in lieu of taxes, meet decommissioning standards, road use and maintenance agreements, things of that nature. There are other documents associated with the structure. There's an indenture that serves as a very fancy mortgage, if you will, securing the bonds, and there's also a bond purchase agreement where an affiliate of the developer agrees to purchase the bonds. And again, those bonds aren't obligations of the county. So, in terms of what the size of the bonds represents, it doesn't, again, it doesn't represent an obligation of the county. Instead, it gives a rough estimate of how much the developer anticipates spending on the project, and it serves as a limit, an upper threshold, for the amount of equipment and personal property that a developer can purchase, exempt from gross receipts and compensating taxes. The bonds are sold to and held by an affiliate of the developer, and that's all done and accomplished through a bond purchase agreement, and those bonds are secured by the indenture that I mentioned earlier. So, the main obligation of a developer, and what most issuers are most interested in, is the obligation of the developer to make payments in lieu of taxes to the issuer. Those payments are finalized and confirmed by county management and the board as part of preparation of industrial revenue bond transaction documents and the adoption of a bond ordinance. The way that we currently have things structured right now is that the ordinance would be adopted, and then a separate resolution would be adopted later, confirming the details associated with the payments in lieu of taxes. That gives the county more time to negotiate and confirm that everything meets the county's expectations, and it allows for the project to, you know, continue moving forward, and a resolution is easier to accomplish and adopt than an ordinance. So, adopting an ordinance now just gives more flexibility for later on to continue those negotiations, and there'd be no obligation to issue the bonds or enter into the transaction until that separate resolution would be adopted. One of the benefits of the payments in lieu of taxes is that there's more flexibility for an issuer and for the beneficiaries of those payments in lieu of taxes to spend that money. Because they're not truly tax, because they're not actually taxes that are generated by the project, they're not subject to the same constitutional restrictions that taxes and tax revenues would be subject to whenever it comes to how government bodies would spend that money. So, there is a benefit to the flexibility that's presented there. So, we've already taken the first step in adopting an inducement and notice resolution, which is part of why I was here, or what I was here for last time that I was here. That established the agency relationship between the developer and Roosevelt County, and because of that, the developer is able to benefit from gross receipts and compensating tax exemptions, in case there are long-term equipment purchases that the company is working through. The next step is the consideration and adoption of a bond ordinance, which is what's currently on today's agenda, and once the bond ordinance is adopted, closing can occur as soon as 30 days after publication of the bond ordinance, but in this case, it would also be subject to adoption of that supplemental resolution. So, I've got some very high-level details about the project, and the developer team is also here to provide more clarity, but the project contemplates solar energy generation and potential battery storage equipment. It would be about 2,250 acres immediately south of County Road 3, just east of Highway 70, in an unincorporated portion of the county. Development is to be undertaken by the Altus Group and Orsted through an entity named Blackwater Solar Center LLC. The requested size of the bond is $315 million with a term of up to 30 years. So, this is the start of the new material that I've added, just because I know that how the pilot gets broken down is a point of interest for many. So, the pilot is still subject to ongoing negotiations between the county and the developer team. We don't know exactly when those will be wrapped up, but the county is under no obligation to wrap them up by a certain date. County is able to proceed at its leisure in those negotiations, and the bond won't be issued until those negotiations are complete and the pilot is satisfactory to the county. The way that the pilot is broken down is determined by statute. At one level, the split between the county and the school districts as a whole is determined by statute 45942B, and then how it gets divided among the school districts is also determined by 45942C. In terms of how things get split between the county and the school districts as a whole, again, there's not really discretion in terms of how that breakdown occurs. It's strictly driven by statute. After doing a quick analysis of the Roosevelt County tax certificate that's available on the state's website, it looks like about 72.3% of the total pilot goes, would go to the county, and 27.7% would go to the school districts. So, you know, using round numbers, assuming that there's a $400,000 annual payment by the developer, that would mean $289,200 would go to Roosevelt County, and then $110,800 would be allocated to the school districts and would be divided, again, pursuant to statute. Section 45942C provides a specific set of mechanics for how the portion that would go to the school districts gets allocated. So, 50% would be allocated to the school district in which the project is located. My understanding is that that is the Texaco School District. 40% is allocated proportional to the geographic area of the school districts, and then 10% is allocated on the basis of school membership. It's a kind of a difficult way to, it's a little bit difficult to conceptualize, just reading the statute, but my understanding is that school, student membership is a metric that's reported to the Public Education Department at certain times of the year, and you would take the average of the second and third reporting periods, and you would use the information from the most recently reported periods as of the date of issuance of the bonds. So, because I'm a lawyer, I've tried to put together simplified math, using a hypothetical example with very round numbers. So, in this hypothetical, there's a solar project that would be within School District 3. Well, okay, sorry, let me back up a little bit. So, we've got a hypothetical county with four different school districts. The project would be located in the third school district, using, going back to the 400,000 number that I used earlier, 289,200 goes to the county, and 110,800 gets allocated according to the formula. Now, School District 1 has 1,000 square miles, 750 average student membership. School District 2, 750 square miles, 750 average student membership. School District 3, 500 square miles, 500 average student membership. School District 4, 250 square miles and 3,000 average student membership. So, what does that turn into in terms of how you divide up the 110,000 and change? So, half of that goes to School District 3, because that's where the project is located, and then looking at the geographic area, which would determine how another 40% would be allocated. So, School District 1 is 1,000 square miles. That's about 40% of the, 40% of the county's total area. That comes out to about, let's see, $17,728 to School District 1. For School District 2, you've got 750 square miles. That's about 30% of the county's total area, and that would result in $13,296 going to School District 2. School District 3, 500 square miles, that's about 20% of the county, and that gets $8,864. And District 4 has 250 square miles, so it comes to 10% of the county, and would get $4,432 annually. Then, for student membership, District 1 has 750 students. That's about 15% of the total student membership for the county. That results in $1,662 annually. District 2 has the same number of students, so would also receive $1,662 annually, and District 3 has 500 students, which would be 10% of the county's total student membership, resulting in $1,108 annually. And then District 4 with 3,000 students, that's 60% of the county's student membership, would get $6,648 annually. That results in District 1 getting a total of about $19,390 annually. District 2 would get about $14,958 annually. District 3 getting $65,372 annually, and District 4 getting $11,080 annually. And that brings you to the total of 110,800 for the four school districts. So, I know that's a lot of math. I did provide the presentation to Annette. Happy to share that with anyone that would like a copy, but thought that rather than just saying the formula out loud, it might be more tangible to use round numbers, at the very least, to give people an idea of what numbers we're working with. So, that's all for my presentation, and happy to answer questions regarding that presentation.
If there's any questions on that. Do you have any questions on what he just presented?
Those figures right there, was that for the duration of the total project?
So.
Or is there a, or is there a time limit on those payments? Like for 20, is that a 10-year plan, 20-year, 30-year, or is it duration of the, of the project?
So, right now, what we've structured in the lease, haven't received comments back just yet, but the most recent draft provides that for the next, upon issuance of the bonds, for 30 years afterwards, the payments would continue. So, regardless of whether the project, the IRB structure has been terminated, the county would receive annual payments, and we've tried to structure it right now. Again, it's all a draft, so that there'd be a flat amount paid annually, and there'd be consistency on that sort of basis. Once the IRB closes, it would just be a static set of payments on an annual basis for the next 30 years.
Is that 400,000 what we're locked in at right now?
No, it was simply a hypothetical.
Okay.
I'm counting four districts, but in my mind, there's five.
I think there might actually be sevens.
Seven.
I.
So, what are they?
Um, let's see.
Melrose House.
Melrose House.
Dora, Floyd, Elida.
Portales.
So, we got, we got our five plus.
In Texaco.
Plus Melrose House and Texaco. And Texaco.
So.
Texaco's in the deal.
We have Melrose, Portales, Floyd, Dora, Elida, Texaco, and House. So, again, I used four just because didn't want to take up more time.
And you're pretty confident on this 22,000 acres. When I went out there and looked around, it looked like it's more than 22,000 acres.
2200.
It's 22.
2258.
22, 2200 acres.
I will defer to the, to the developer team on that one. I don't know the specifics for their current leases.
I wanted to speak into the mic, just so people can hear me. Hi, my name is Jamie. I'm here representing the project team. The acreage figure that was listed on the PowerPoint is correct. It's 2,250 acres. We have explored additional acreage for the project and narrowed it down roughly to that scope.
You've explored the additional acreage, but that additional acreage is not contained in the 2000. So, if they get the additional acreage, what would it be?
We started with a leased and footprint under option with roughly 3,000 acres total. And that size restriction comes from our relationship with SPP, the Southwest Power Pool, that is managing the interconnection queue process, and we are limited to a size of 200 megawatts for this site. So, the entire 3,000 acres are not able to be used because of that size restriction.
Okay, that answers another question.
Thank you.
Sure. I have more information that I'd like to share about the project company and where we're representing, but happy to defer to the board and Mr. Kelton, in case there are any other questions about what he presented.
Go on.
I certainly can. Yeah, if nothing else, thank you so much, Peter, for that overview. I think it adds a lot of color to the work that we're hoping to do here in Roosevelt County. I, thank you for having us today, of course. I come with a robust project team. Many of you look familiar from when we were here last. I'm a company, my name again is Jamie Mears. I'm a development manager with Orsted. I'm accompanied by four members of our team. Behind me, I have Thane, T-H-A-N-E, and Beatrice is sitting here next, and then next to her is Josh, and finally Brianna. So, this team comes to you with a proposal to share a little bit about our project. We are a global renewable energy company, and when I refer to the company, I'm referring to Orsted. The project company, you may have heard the name, is Blackwater Solar LLC. That is an entity that we wholly own, and we contract the Altus Group to help consult us during this process. So, Orsted will be the full owner-operator of the project entity. We develop, construct, and operate renewable energy projects around the world, including onshore solar, as you're referencing here today, in addition to onshore wind, offshore wind, bioenergy plants, waste-to-energy solutions, et cetera, and we are based in Denmark. Now, our team is consisted of US-based employees of the company, but our main headquarters are in Copenhagen, Denmark. Our company is 50.1% owned by the Danish government. I do want to make that really clear today, because I know there were some questions ahead of our meeting about what that looks like, and I want to break that down for you. So, Orsted, like I said, just over the majority shares under the Danish government, followed by the remaining 49.9%, is publicly traded on the NASDAQ Copenhagen Stock Exchange. So, with that in mind, we have been in business for 20-some, 30-some years now. Formally, we were known as Danish Oil and Natural Gas. We have not always been Orsted, so that name might ring a bell to some. The abbreviation of that company is Dong Energy, which I have to acknowledge, because I always get some looks, and they were not in primarily English-speaking markets at the time that they went by that name. The primary business around that time, when we were Danish Oil and Natural Gas in the early 2000s, was focused just on that oil and natural gas. We started building offshore wind in Denmark and the UK around 2008, and in 2015, Orsted invested in their first US project off the coast of Massachusetts. We actually just celebrated our seven-year anniversary since the name changed to Orsted, after the namesake Hans Christian Orsted, a Danish scientist who discovered electromagnetism, interestingly enough. We have had a very successful construction year. 2024 has been our biggest year yet. We, I've got some numbers here, but roughly our solar production has increased due to the construction of three new solar projects. That's two in Texas and one in Arizona, just south of Phoenix. That Phoenix project, that project just south of Phoenix is called 11 Miles Solar. You're welcome to give it a Google search after this, but it is 600 megawatts in size, whereas this project will be 200 megawatts in size. So, wanted to give some scale there. I'll pause there for any questions, but happy to review some of the details on the project, or, you know, some of our projects in the area, things of that nature. Okay. If nothing else, our team will be here to answer questions, but really appreciate the time.
You're cleaning up after the project is over.
That's right.
Can you go in detail about the?
Sure. Yeah, so, so as part of these agreements, we do fully anticipate both a decommissioning component as well as a road use agreement. The terms of those have not fully been spelled out, but as we've been discussing this with Annette and Peter, there have been no terms in which we have disagreed upon, and for all intents and purposes, decommissioning is the entire responsibility of the Orsted team, and there are no complications related to that that we've come across yet. On the road use agreement, any degradation of roads as a result of this project or construction of this project is on the responsibility of the Orsted team. While we don't have those agreements fully drafted nor agreed upon, I don't anticipate any concerns around either of those. Like I said, we haven't had a term or anything that Annette has, Annette or Peter have brought up, have been, you know, things that we are amenable to and comfortable agreeing to.
During this decommissioning, cleaning up deal, where would that stuff go?
Yeah, so, we have a partnership with an organization called Solar Cycle, and for those in the room, I encourage you to give them a Google search after our meeting today as well, but they are a cradle-to-cradle, if you may call it, solar recycling company that we have invested in through a partnership agreement. What they will do is they will take the primary component of the solar site, which is a solar module, and they will deframe, remove the glass, crush and grind any materials, and the primary components that are coming out of that are aluminum, glass, silicon, copper, silver, things that can be recovered. And typically, these offtakers, as you may call it, for the glass, you can think bottles, carbon fiber mixes to be used in bicycles, you know, all kinds of things. And then for the metals, it's primarily cadmium and tellurium and other mining companies that we use to go through for further refinement, and then the last component of that that they. Um, and then the, uh, the, the last component of that, that they recycle is aluminum. And we find that that's probably the easiest to find the next use for.
Thank you.
I've got, oh, go ahead, Commissioner. Sorry. Well, Chris, well, I think was gonna go. He's got the floor.
During his decommissioning and stuff, uh, the, uh, ground contamination and stuff, what's your process of keeping all that secured for the ground? The ground contamination and the water contamination.
Yeah, we are, are very, uh, interested in making sure that the project itself does not contaminate the local water sources. We, we do this in part by sourcing our materials only from tier-one manufacturers in which we have the confidence to know what materials they're using and, and how their security within the system would not be running off, for example, during high periods of rain or weather. We are also, you know, as far as protecting the integrity of the site, we intend to use perennial native grasslands and, and other native species underneath the panels to try to prevent any erosion.
In case of, uh, your solar battery reserves that you're using up there, you know, water's short, uh, short supply up here?
Right.
If there was to be a fire at one of those storage facilities, what, how much water has to be used to put that, to go ahead and try to put those fires out of those, of your battery deals?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I don't have an exact number of, of gallons of water, but just to make it very clear for the group today, what we are proposing here is a black water solar project. There is not currently a storage component. So, so if you're asking about.
So with the solar panels, there's not a storage component with this?
Not as currently proposed, no.
Okay. All right. That, under my understanding, I figured there was a storage component with the, with the solar panels of some kind.
And it's.
Before it went online.
That makes sense because it's very common for them to be paired together, but no, here the, the IRB discussions are solely for a solar-only project.
All right. Thank you.
I've got one question. On job creation, um, did y'all, and y'all's feasibility study, what are y'all? Stage one through the final stage, what's the job creation gonna look like? And will local individuals be able to work at Charles Plant?
Absolutely. That is a, a hope of ours and we intend to, to work with the, the local economic development groups to, to make that happen. The, uh, the current projection would be a construction term workforce of roughly hundred fifty to two hundred fifty members. That would include a, a small number of folks that we bring in from out of town and then we will be issuing a, a online portal for local community members and companies to submit bids and participate in our bidding process to source some of that local workforce. Uh, I, I understand too, that the state of New Mexico has a statute related to apprentice work that we intend to follow as well. Uh, and for the operations term, you know, one of the biggest advantages of developing solar projects is their ability to run nearly on their own independently without needing a large workforce minus safety and what's needed for maintenance. And so that number during construction is going to be much higher than it will be during operations. During operations, we're looking at less than ten full-time operational roles.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay.
Any more questions? Uh, we have some school superintendents with us. And I would like to, for them to be able to entertain questions from our school superintendents. They've made efforts to show up. They have something that like to ask. I'd like to give them an opportunity to ask this time.
I agree.
Mrs. Rowley in Shandsdale.
You can just take the mic.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Sharon Rowley. I don't know how to speak in this and look at you. I'm superintendent here in Portales. I have a lot of questions. Both personally as well as for the school district. And you indicated that, that it, if there were a fire, because the letter we received was for photovoltaic battery storage predominantly. And so what you're saying is different than what we were originally told. And there were concerns about fire hazards and the, the chemicals that would be used on those type of. So is there a possibility that you're bringing those in? Because you said at this point it was not. But is there a possibility that in the thirty-year plan it would change to that?
Yeah, at this time I can't guarantee that we, or that SPP, the Southwest Power Pool would not look to have a battery here. Um, that's something that we, you know, if we are interested in bringing a battery here, we will be sitting down with the fire chiefs before we sit down with anyone else to ensure that we, those conversations are had and, and we're certainly interested in doing so. Uh, what I'll say is that we are at the mercy of the, the local grid and the local interconnection authorities. Uh, I mentioned SPP, the Southwest Power Pool in particular. Uh, they ultimately will be responsible for dictating or making the decision as to whether or not a battery is suitable here to support the local grid infrastructure.
Okay. And you mentioned to Commissioner Lopez that local facility, local community businesses will be able to put in bids, those kind of things. But as the crow flies, this is going to be closer to Clovis. Then it is Portales and they are our neighbors, but they are not in Roosevelt County. And the idea would be for the growth of Roosevelt County. How, how will that look? Will you have people? Will they be required to spend money in Roosevelt County, live in Roosevelt County, eat in Roosevelt County, or will they be going to Clovis, which is just a hop and skip from where you're building?
Yeah. No, that's a great question and, and certainly open to having that conversation, but at, at our current operational sites, while we encourage our employees to stay in the local communities and, and spend money in those local communities, and most do, especially during the construction term, a lot of them will live in, in temporary housing for that period. I, I can't say that we restrict what these employees are doing during that time.
Those kind of, the numbers are important for us. As a school district, we're required to tell our membership, we recently just finished doing that. And in, in predicting our membership, it's often a no-no if you overpredict. Actually hurts us tremendously. So those, knowing those numbers and having, you know, I know that some of the employees that would come may not be have children, but as you've seen on the solar, uh, projects in New Mexico, it's been a surprising amount of students that have come with families. So it's very important for us to know what numbers we're looking at for projections and, and that, like I said, that recently happened. So around this time of year, we would, we would need to know that. My biggest concerns are just safety and health. And then, uh, you know, there's a lot of cattle out there. That's my personal concern. We run cattle all the way across the Kakawati. I don't know if you know what that is. It's a road that takes us to Texas, affectionately known as the Kakawati. And we run cattle all the way across, um, the county line.
Got it.
To the terminology of, you know, I ask my husband what pasture he's at and if he says substation, then I'm sure that's what you're close to. You know, we, we know where that's at. So there was concerns about the photovoltaic batteries. And that's, I think, something that everybody wanted to know about. Our community, uh, in Clovis and by the airbase has had some problems with the cattle in that area because when they're doing fire retardant, it got in the water.
Understood.
And so I don't know if you guys have, have looked into that, but we're a little gun shy about that. Where the schools are concerned, we, we love the idea of bringing in any industry that we can. Um, we, we love the idea of the pilot. Again, there, you know, it's difficult because of the size and the amount. It's, it's, you know, we would want to probably negotiate that, probably more so as a group of those in Roosevelt County and, and, and incorporated. I know Texaco's in the group as well. You guys have any questions?
Robert Brown from Texaco. And I actually submitted a number of questions through Chuck Garcia. He's represents Cuddy and McCarthy and, um, our school district. And, and if you don't mind Chuck, I'll just turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Mr. Brown has indicated I'm Chuck Garcia with Cuddy McCarthy.
Can you go to the microphone so they can hear you online, please?
Uh, good morning again, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity this morning. Uh, as Mr. Brown has indicated, I'm Chuck Garcia with Cuddy McCarthy. Uh, and we did submit, uh, a, a number of, uh, questions for, for purposes of clarification this morning. So thank you, Mr. Kelton, for, uh, your presentation, your description. I think there's a couple of questions that are still outstanding, at least from, uh, our perspective. One is our review of the draft lease indicated there were seven tracts of land that were going to be used for purposes of putting the solar arrays. And just confirmation that all seven of those tracts are located within a single school district. Secondly, uh, and I guess this is a question for the developer at this point. Do you all have a buyer for the solar energy that you're going to be producing? And is that something you can share with us at this point?
Thank you for the questions. I'll answer, uh, the first one regarding the, the location of the seven tracts. And we can confirm today that all seven tracts fall in a single school district. Uh, for your second question regarding a, a buyer of the power, it's clear you've done your homework because this is a very important part of the business that I'm happy to share more about, but as of today, we do not currently have a contract for the power. That's common. Um, as the current timeline for the project would be a, a coming online date, so to speak, of end of twenty twenty-six. Um, so our team is working hard to secure that and we're on track to do so. Uh, Orsted has this commonly worked with both utilities and what we call CNI, commercial and industrial type buyers. A lot of these utilities, some that, one particular that comes to mind is we have an operational project in Muscle Shoals, Alabama, to which we one hundred percent sell power to TBA, the Tennessee Valley Authority. Uh, another structure in which we develop projects, like I said, is through that CNI category. You can think of companies like Amazon, Facebook, Google. Those are the types of buyers that we see on that side. Yeah. So we, like I said before, are hundred percent at the mercy of SPP, the Southwest Power Pool, which manages the, the local grid in this region. We, as Orsted and in previous entities, submitted the Blackwater Solar Center into the SPP queue back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe. So we have been working adamantly behind the scenes to continue pushing that through the queue process. However, as you can imagine, it is quite delayed as we're standing here in twenty twenty-four and still are working through that process. So we're expecting to get some results from them over the next few months. And if things stay on track, we would sign our generator interconnection agreement, which is the, the final deliverable of that process, uh, probably early next summer.
Madam Chair, I have one more thing and great points that you made, Sharon. And as well as the points you made, but it may already be happening, but is Jody, our RCCDC involved with this? And our chamber director, and that's the Roosevelt County Community Development Center. Okay. I just think that they could be instrumental in, on some of the issues and concerns we might have.
She came with him when they first.
Right. I just didn't know. Well, okay.
Yes. No, we certainly intend to work closely with that group and, and is common at all of our projects to do so. One, uh, comment that I'd like to make, if I am able to do so, the, the interest in working with our, our school representatives here is, is mutual and I appreciate your time being here today. So thank you for making the time on a school day to come and be with us. It's much appreciated. The, uh, something that I'd like to note is some, is with Orsted being the developer here, we take a special interest in bringing STEM education initiatives to the schools in the areas in which we're developing our projects. Add it to your, your Google list. I've got a list going here for you. Uh, but there's an organization called Kid Wind. It's all one word. Let, let's set up a chat after today. I can tell you all about it, but over the last year, we've donated nearly a hundred thousand dollars to this nonprofit organization across our onshore portfolio in the US with the intent of bringing renewable energy education to take to K through twelve students. And we're entering the, the university space as well. So I know there's some community college students in the area we'd love to reach as well. So let's certainly have the conversation. Thank you.
And what is y'all's timeline on this to build this project?
Yeah. So, so as I mentioned, the, uh, the current coming online date, also known as a commercial operations date is late twenty twenty-six. In order to achieve that date, we would start construction by the end of next year.
And how is it with supply and demand? How are y'all doing with that right now?
Are you asking about the power or our materials and procurement? It's a great question. So we, um, in the interest of, um, working within the the IRA, the, the federal IRA bill, we are certainly interested in sourcing as much domestic content as we can to qualify for those additional incentives. Uh, they're, they're put in place just for that reason. And so one way that we intend to do that is by pursuing solar modules that are made in the US. That would be easier to source than going abroad. But there are some critical components like breakers and substation equipment that we cannot necessarily source in the US if they're not manufactured here by anybody. And those are showing time, timeframes that align with that schedule. And we'll be, you'll be our first call if, if something certainly changes there. But as of now, those timeframes are aligning.
Because from what I understand in the past, there's been some problems with that, with, you know, y'all have had some complications with that. So I was just concerned about what happens in, in the event that takes place.
Yeah, I think projects that are entering the SPP queue in the last couple of years are facing that, but since we entered the queue in twenty eighteen, we have had our, our name in the bucket for a little bit longer and that sets us apart.
Thank you.
You know, I'm probably like everybody else here, welcome the opportunity to contribute financially to our school systems.
Absolutely.
I'm, but same time a concern, putting this plant on highly erodible soils. Sandy and sandy loam soils are highly prone to erode, especially in the spring. We have prevailing, severe prevailing winds out of the west. And when you clear that land off through your installation, that wind comes, then your neighbors to the east, they're probably not going to look upon you as favorable. But if you don't like the wind blowing to the east of you, just wait a little bit. It'll blow back from the other way and go any direction. And we have a dairy right there next to it. And sand, sandstorm and dust storms is certainly not conducive to the health of dairy cattle.
Of course.
So that's a concern. So I'm, I'm wondering about, you said, I, I'm pretty well convinced that after, after the project is completed and you reseed with native grasses, we're going to hold the soil and that looks very favorable. But in the meantime, those years of construction, when that land is bare, how are we going to control that type of situation?
Yeah, we, we fortunately just went through this, uh, at our eleven mile solar site just south of Phoenix. And we are going to be sharing best practices and lessons learned with that team. But one strategy of note is, uh, the intent to spray a small amount of water across the, the soil that's barren during the construction term to prevent the uptake of, of wind and soil during that time. But keeping in mind that water is a precious, precious resource, excuse me, and we'll be mindful of that.
Okay, that's another question. After the project is completed then, because we're in, in the area where in eastern Mexico, the wind blows and the dust blows.
Sure.
And there, it's a farming area and you're going to get soil deposits on your collectors that didn't originate from your site.
Right.
I would anticipate, and I don't know, but I would suspect that that would impair their ability to, to collect and, and generate electricity. So they would have to be washed. I'm assuming they're going to need to be washed. But we don't have any more water storage or any plans for water.
Right.
How are you going to wash them?
Yeah. So hope, we hope first and foremost that the intentional planting that is done in and around the site will be the first barrier of defense. We recognize that won't get all of it, but we're hoping that will help some. After that, uh, we currently have a small solar measurement device out on that site. It's no bigger than about this big. And what we're measuring. And what we're measuring now is how much can be, how much energy can be produced over the course of a year on a single solar panel without cleaning it. And we'll have those results here in the next few weeks and can share those with you. But as of now, it's been out there for a year and the data is showing that after one year of data collection, without cleaning it, it's been favorable, which tells us that we could potentially go multiple years in between cleanings, if at all.
You can go multiple years without cleaning?
That's what we're hoping, based on the results.
Clean, where you going to get the water?
Yeah, at this time, it's not defined as to whether or not we would need to clean at all. But if we do need to use local water resources, then let's certainly have that conversation. I think we're absolutely considering that, yes. Yeah, especially with such a dry climate. We see in some areas that the dirt in a more humid climate has the tendency to stick to a panel, but then the rain that comes more frequently will wash it away. Whereas here, since the dirt sediments on the panels are a little bit drier, they're more likely to be blown off by wind or a brush.
I did want to comment, I have talked to a gentleman who has a solar collecting site off the cap.
Okay.
And he's had it for several years and I've visited with him extensively and he, he sees no concern about contamination or environmental concerns or, he's even had hail occur on that site and beat those collectors up some and still, still there's no danger of any type of contamination still in. So I feel pretty good about the contamination part.
Okay.
Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. I know, Peter, are you the one I spoke to? No, phone call?
Peter Franklin.
It was Peter Franklin, okay. I don't want to sound like ungrateful.
Sure.
So I'll be cautious here. We're grateful for the industry and we want to make sure it's safe. And then we want to make sure our kids are taken care of. New Mexico's strange because we're so broad and we have a lot of area that is covering this land. On some of the calculations that you made for certain districts, that would not even cover our one student under the state equalization guarantee. So our SEG dollar amount on some of those would not cover one child if brought back by the family, which hopefully, I'm going to say this, I hope would be living in our county and going to school in our schools, the ones of us involved. And so for us, and I know you stated that the statute, and I've looked at the statute and studied it, it would be very difficult for us to do what we need to do with one or less than one student being paid for on what we call the SEG that have to then come out of our operational. So we would ask to look at that and possibly renegotiate. I understand there's a statute, but sort of where these people are going to live and what they're going to do maybe matters.
Sure.
And I know we may not control that, but I would ask that the committee consider it and know that we would, we would want to look at renegotiation. We'd be willing to do it as a group. So we have certain things we have to look at as well, so.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you for your time. I did have one more question. Do you have studies on the effects of what this would do with the cattle in the area? I know you said there's a dairy nearby and there would be other cattle nearby. Do you have studies on that and how it would affect them and all the different things?
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up with you with some specific work that's been done. But generally speaking, we are intentionally building setbacks into our solar projects to make sure that they are a significant distance from any local homes, cattle grazing areas, et cetera. And at this time, we do not see an impending risk on those local.
I'm assuming it would be fenced, would it be fenced in a way that would keep all livestock out, small, large?
That's right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. All right, thank you very much. This time we move on to public request. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about, add to? Nothing? Okay. We will move on to elected officials. First up is Ms. Park, clerk's office.
Hello. I don't really have a report since the canvas is later in the agenda. Just election went well and we're glad it's done.
Okay, thank you. Court compliance.
So.
Ms. Minus.
Court compliance is going to present, but we actually have a meeting on Friday and she's looking at adding a policy, so we're going to have that later on.
Okay. We can move on to detention, Ms. Ramsey, Gordon Ramsey.
Good morning. This morning, our facility count is at 59. We have 13 females, 46 males, 12 out of county. Last month's billing for Quay was $30,000. Curry was $375. Eddie County was $625 and Cannon was $5,250. For our MAP program, we have 11, 11 in group counseling, 11 in individual, six to interview for the program. We have nine on medication that are in the program. We have two on medication that are not in the program. We have three in our GED program, 11 in yoga parenting. We're waiting on applications to be turned in by the detainees. Anger management just finished. We did sexual health and we had 10 detainees take that class. I wanted to also add to our, my report is that we had 79 bookings last month and 79 releases, not including the 20 transports and the 59 individuals that we have in-house right now. So just kind of giving you a totality of what my booking area is doing constantly every day. So that's all I have for my report. I stand for any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Road Department, Mr. Dominguez.
Morning.
Morning.
So on our projects, we are hauling on South Roosevelt Road Z and 34. We're also working on AU West of Kena. And once the trucks finish up on 34 and Z, we will start hauling to AU. And from there, we will move to North AP, West of Melrose. And we've got all the blades out, running around, trying to fix washouts all over the country. So one on 15 and P, one in Millen Sand, one south of Floyd, one on X and 114, one on X and 2, one West of Melrose, one on Baseline and O. And then we've been out, we've got four and a half chip seal. We've been out tree trimming and doing some pahoe patching. And that's about all I got. And we got a big mess out there, so.
How are we doing on bus routes?
There, we try to get to them as soon as, you know, priority. But along the way, we find as we're traveling there, you know, so kind of. And there, yeah, it's all over the place, so.
I know I've called you with a bunch because I've had a bunch of phone calls.
Right.
I appreciate all y'all are doing. I know you're working hard to try to get them all done and
Right.
it's washed out everywhere, not just in my district.
Oh, yeah.
I thank you.
The whole county, I think, so.
And that's, you know, we got rain.
Part of it, gotta love it. All right.
Thanks, Juan.
Thank you. Okay, manager, Ms. Kirk.
Okay. So one of the first things we thought we'd like to cover is we did have an ethics board meeting. We do have a decision. The decision that was stated is that they voted to dismiss the complaint.
Okay.
And so we'll finalize all of those items this week.
Okay.
As I told you earlier, our finance quarterly report will probably be showing as late due to the fact that we didn't get it submitted until a day after. It's been brought to my attention that we need to move forward on the easement on the state land office. So I'll continue to make sure that we move forward with it.
Okay.
We did have myself and of course Commissioner Dixon also had a meeting regarding a new business. It looks like that'll be something that'll be interesting in the future. But it was nice to sit in and see kind of what's out there and what other businesses bring about. So there's a few loose ends that have to be tied up. And until those things get taken care of, then we'll be able to be excited to bring them to the commission later on, or I hope to be able to bring them to the commission later on or Jody will be able to do that. Of course, we've been working as it was stated, you know, with Blackwater Solar, trying to get everything submitted and everybody's questions answered. We also have another item on the agenda. We've been, I've been visiting back and forth with Eugene here, who's going to be able to answer any questions you have regarding the Bonham House. We do have that construction project. We want to be able to move forward to get that finalized so we can get the ARPA funds encumbered and ready to get those spent or that way we don't lose those monies. And then I don't have Gary here, but we'd like to be able to tear those old horse stall barns. We've kind of discussed them in the past, behind the outdoor arena that haven't been used in years. Probably, I hate to even admit how old I am, so probably at least 30 years. And he'd like to go ahead and dispose of those, get them tore down, disposed of, and hauled off, I guess, to Ed's or someplace for recycle. If y'all are, I did check and they are not on the asset list. We, I did get confirmation, we're still working with, trying to get the final on the roof insurance. We quite haven't got the go-ahead yet to do that, to get all of our roof damages repaired from the hailstorms we had in the spring. But there's one more check and we should be good to go. We'll be using, oh shoot, they just lifted my head. But I've dealt with them in the past. They're good company. Roosevelt County's used them as well, so they'll get us taken care of. I did have a meeting last week with the fire department, all the fire departments. It was brought to my attention that there was an agreement that was negotiating back in the spring with Dora. I would like definitely to visit with any of y'all anymore about those agreements so we can be prepared for this year's agreements on the rural fire departments.
Nice to meet you.
Because I'm sure that's a concern for y'all as well. And that's really all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Anybody got anything for Annette? Okay, Mr. Greider?
I'm just glad to see Jim is here. I hope she's lack of her job. Dean?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chriswell?
I got a couple of things. It was mentioned about the Board of Ethics meeting we had the other day last week. There was just, there was four representatives, four board members here, myself, Manny Parker, Annette and Randy Benfle. And Jimma might have been here. And I guess Brandon was here too. Or no, he was not. Jimma got it on the line. But anyway, it was Jimma. That's the biggest waste of time for everybody. I hate to say that, but it was because going through there, there, nobody has any authority to do anything. Even if there was, if they said something, you know, yes, we don't like that. My question was before this all started, what authority do they have if they said yes? They found some reason unethical. They said none. There's no authority to it whatsoever. So that was the biggest waste of time for, for the board members to come up here and sit up here through that, my time to come up here and watch it and Manny's time of taking minutes and Annette's time taking out of her busy day and Jimma's. That was on my mind. Second, the horse stalls, get them off the deal. Out there at the road department, back there in the back, there's a couple of cars, some shredders and a couple of trucks and a bunch of junk that needs to be hauled off. Are those on the asset deals or somewhere we could clean that stuff up and back in there, you know?
Yeah, those are complicated cars, the two that are out there.
Yeah, well, yeah. You know, I think we need to clean some of this stuff. You know, get some of that stuff cleaned up and we have time. If we haul it to Ed's or haul it out to Bill Johnson's and get it off the, just to get it off the place.
Well, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the cars we can't really, we'll have to visit with sheriff's office and see what their protocol is to, but if their evidence.
Is the road department the impound yard then?
I guess it was just the safest location. So, yeah.
And what's the, and what's the limitations on them being on the impound?
Mark Harvier.
Do you know, Mayland?
I mean, it just depends on if the case has been adjudicated or not. I know those cars that seize during my term as sheriff, so I don't know. I think that all the cases have been adjudicated. And so they should be, again, I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but they should be available to be disposed of now.
All right. You know, it's just, oh, I was back there looking at the, at the new, at the ongoing construction at the fairgrounds and looking at that and how it was going and made a circle back there and I'm like, crap, there's a lot of, you know, if we're going to clean up, let's just see if we can't clean up and, you know, and make a bigger spot for one, for his other stuff, you know, and get that stuff, that way he can control the weeds and everything back there, you know, I know. And anyway, and then we were, yesterday, just going through interview process and we were out there at the Jake, at the Jake Lopez building in the McAllister Room. There's a padlock on the outside of the door, on the inside of the Jake Lopez. And anyway, we were having that, those, we were in there from 8:30 till 3:30 yesterday evening. And we couldn't, there's no way of access in a bathroom.
That's for election security. It can be removed now. But it couldn't be, it had to be no access from the public, the extension clubs, all of that during election.
I just figured the outside doors and stuff were locked going in there, but, uh.
There's your list.
And anyway, and then the inside, we were sitting there talking and there's the commode in the extension office. They said it's been turned in and turned in about it leaking for a while and nobody's ever been looked at it. Right, and so I just told them I'd turn it in. And then the east entrance of the extension office and the north entrances, when it rains, that water is going in there and it's already ruined, it's ruining the new carpet that was just put down here this past year, I think. It's less than a year old and it's ruining that carpet, those doors are leaking when it rains. And so it's ruining the new carpet that was just laid down. And I, we need to try to do something just to.
It has to do with, that's, has to do with that new construction when they laid that cement. So we're going to have to look at figuring out a way to sand it down or.
Yeah, they told me to ask, is Johnny, when the wheelchair accessible? I guess the wheelchair, I guess you had to raise that cement up on those sidewalks to the entrances of the extension office? To be wheelchair accessible on those entrances?
Well, as long as, as long as it's accessible even by putting a landing, you don't have to raise it, you can gradually lift it up to meet the high.
I know that those sidewalks are, they're level with the door entrance. And so when it rains, that water, it doesn't go nowhere.
Normally, when you put that entrance going into the door, you're supposed to put a lean going back out the other way. So I would suggest, like Annette was saying, maybe sand it down a bit. maybe sanding down a bit where it comes back opposite.
But anyway, but anyway, it's just something that needs to be looked at, because we just redid that flooring and stuff in there, and now we've got pretty good sized carpet stains on both those entrances, right there on the east entrance and the north entrance of the extension office there.
Was that concrete just recently done?
Yes.
Maybe we need to go back to that contractor.
Because it's, it's all new concrete, you know, they ripped, they took the trees out and put in new sidewalks and stuff out there.
I can go check it out and measure it and see how it's sitting, and get back to you.
There is a problem, but there is a problem, and, and it just needs to be addressed.
Yes, sir, I'll look at it.
You know, see what we can do. I don't know what we can do to stop, if we have to build an awning over each entrance to keep the, shed that water somewhere else, or something, we got to do some, you know, something needs to be done, or we just, it's just going to be, be just like it was beforehand, you know, be redoing it again. But anyway, but that's all I have.
Savage?
No, I'm good.
Are you ready? It might snow, because I have nothing today. We're getting snow.
We must be. All right. Well, thank you. Moving on, item eight, old business. Discussion and consideration of right-of-ways of county roads with the state land office. Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Madam President. I asked to get this on the agenda, because it's been some time since we had a, a conversation about acquiring these right-of-ways, and listen, that would be considerable savings to the counties if we did so immediately, because if we wait, I think it's like a dollar or something a rod that they quoted us. If not, they can charge us, don't hold me to that, $20 a, $30 a rod? And if, and could even affect the landowners. So I'd like to move forward with acquiring these right-of-ways. I think it's going, it was like a $40,000 cost, which, it's not budgeted, but I think we have it available. I'd like to move forward, because with the political situation in New Mexico, right now they have it offered to us. I think we should take that opportunity to get it done and get it over with. This is something that's been lingering on, hanging on, lingering on, having a discussion, keep, keep kicking the can down the road. I'd like to get it done, get us behind us, and take advantage of that offer now, because if we don't, later on, they can charge us a lot more. Yeah, I think the state land commission would do whatever they want to do on this, and they made this offer, I think we need to take advantage of it. So, I don't know, does anybody else have any comments? I want to move forward with this immediately.
Is it an extra item? Can it be an extra item today? Because I agree with you 100%.
It says discussion and, discussion and consideration of the right-of-ways. I believe it'd be a discussion item today. Maybe Mr. Montregon might want to make comments out of it.
Hello? I'm sure.
You're here.
My comments on that is, the state land commission is wanting us to pay for an easement across their country, all right? I've talked to some landowners, they would like to have the land office pay them for an easement for the county road going through them, going to state lease. You know, this is ongoing, this is, like I say, it's just, it's been up since 2012. It's come to our attention now, they want us to pay $40,000 for this easement. You know, why do the private landowners, how come they're not getting compensated for an easement from the state land office, for the state to access their lands when it, when the county road goes through deeded country, private landowners? And so I have a problem with this. These, and another deal is, we have maintained these roads for all these years. Far as I'm concerned, it's a wash for the maintenance of these roads, of these state, through, across state lease lands, through state land. You know, and so I have a pro, like, you know, I have a, I expressed my concern about this when it first brought to our attention, and I still have a problem with it. And I do know of some counties that a lot more state leased than what we do, they have a lot more state lands than what we do, and they're kind of calling it a wash, from what I've been told. And so I have a problem with this, and I'm, you know, and if that's what we need to do, I have a problem with it, but I'm just trying to protect our $40,000 of our people's money. And so, like I, you know, like I say, I have a problem with it, because I think the state land office ought to compensate the private landowners that these county roads go through for the state to access their, their, you know, their land. So, that's my thought.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think, in my opinion, we needed legal opinion from Mr. Garcia. What do you think in reference to this? Because if it's going to be statute, and it goes up from $1 to the 30 amount, and we're legally mandated to pay this, I mean, would it be too, because I agree with Commissioner Chriswell, but would that be two separate legal issues to try to get the county residents to be? I would love for it to be a wash. It has been for, what, 50 years, 60 years, whatever? Yeah, and this just came on this past year, and I don't know why they're enforcing it all of a sudden, but what would be your legal opinion on this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Chriswell, but I, first, let me, let me plead ignorance about how the, the private citizens have given easements to state land, to the state for access to state lands. I just don't know anything about that, and so I'm, I'd be giving an opinion with, completely in the dark, I just, I just don't know how, how frequent that is, or, or, you know, how much it occurs, how much land is involved. So, and I, I, sorry, I don't have a, I can't give an opinion on that that would be worth anything. Regarding the, the, the fact that we have, have provided maintenance for the, for state roads, one thing to, that may help to frame this, is that, you know, if you're familiar with adverse possession, and like, like in common, common language, sometimes it's called squatter's rights, you know, if you use somebody's land long enough in an open and notorious way, it becomes yours. So like, if you had a, if you had a plot of, an acre land that you had just, that belonged to a neighbor, and you just used it for 20 years openly, and nobody ever put a stop to it, you could, you'd have a good claim that, you might have a good claim that it's your land now. That almost never works with the government. So if you were treating, if you were treating the state roads as your roads for decades, it, you, you have a very, very difficult time arguing that now it's your road. So you could, and the same would be true if a private landowner said that, you know, he had been, he'd been grading a road all this time that was a county road, and he thought it should be his road. He would have a very difficult time arguing that it's his road. I, I bring that up as a way to look at it, because I guess you could consider, you could consider that it's a trade-off for the county to just, you know, own the road or to have an easement for the road. Another way of looking at it is that, that maybe that's factored into the price of the dollar and 16 cents for, for a rod of road. So I, and I guess when it comes down to whether you want to pay the $40,000 for, trying to remember, it seems like there was something like 108 rods, if I remember the discussion properly. That's ultimately going to be a political decision, it's going to be your judgment call on it. Don't think you're legally right or wrong. Politically, I think you just have to weigh the risks and the benefits of, of whether it, you know, I think one thing you could consider is that it's going to put to rest the issue for the residents of Roosevelt County, and it won't be a question anymore. You can put to rest the question of, of the, the cost going up in the future. Or you can, you know, you could make your arguments that, that, that there's a trade-off. The thing is, is, you know, if it ultimately had to be decided in court, the, it would cost probably well over $40,000 just to deal with the lawsuit. So, I gave, I don't know, I, I tried to give you a lot of information there, and, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to do my best to answer them, kind of a big-picture perspective right there, that's best I can do.
Every year, we have income from the state, they pay us to maintain these roads. How much is it, Juan? How much do we get?
It's over, at the miles we're at now, it's over $120,000. I'm not for sure on the exact number.
So, when you, what I'm trying to say, we've been receiving money to do that already, and you're saying they owe us, but I'm just saying, it hadn't been all free. We hadn't been doing this, maintaining the roads. We've been receiving money also to maintain these roads.
I thought the state of New Mexico and New Mexico land office was two different entities.
They are.
So we receive our, but we receive funding from the Mexi, from the state of New Mexico, but not from the New Mexico land office. And so, you know, okay, Michael, whenever we, several years ago, that road, the road that in, that's in discussion, that's brought about all of this, several years ago, that road was cletched for several miles. Okay? Did it have to go through inspections before, and didn't it have to go through inspections afterwards from the state, before those projects were done? And if they went through those inspections, why were they, why did we receive funding, or if we did receive funding from the state, in those inspections, why wasn't this caught back then? And the other roads that, that I know that going through state lease that are cletchy, you know, that are cletched and stuff? Is there, is there no inspections on the, on the new roads, or improvements on these county roads, and, or, you know, on the before and afterwards?
Commissioner Chriswell, are you talking about County Road AV, or, or any other one in particular?
Well, that one in particular, and other words, and, and others.
So, I don't know what the, what the state's process would have been, or why they hadn't brought it up until now. We, and I don't think that we were ever clear on it, even when the, the folks from the state land office came and gave their presentation. I, I really don't have an answer for that. Somehow, whether they caught it now, and they're, they're bringing their, their, I guess, offer to, to, to work it out at this point in time. Short answer, I don't know. I really don't know how the, how they did it before, how they did it.
How do we go about finding that out?
You could, you might do a public records request to the state land office for documents related to that. That would probably be the simplest way.
Okay. Oh. Can I talk to Juan?
I don't care.
Juan, when you do improvements on county roads like that, is, are there state inspections before you do the projects and afterwards?
You get them engineered, you got to do our clearances.
Your clearance, so you, you get, get your clearances?
Environmental, right away, agricultural, there's, there's five.
So surely out of those five clearances, somebody looked into.
Well, right away.
Whose road it was, and, and if we even had to write, do any improvements to it. Right?
Well, you.
That's just my, that's my argument, right?
You mentioned the other day, or a while ago, that you're trying to save the county's money, so we didn't have to do that. Have you ever figured out what the GRT is on $8 million?
$540,000.
How many?
$540,000.
Okay.
Talk about the grocery seat tax.
On the project they intend to put into that road.
Well, what about the other road?
It looks to me like, while I'm speaking, Mr. Chriswell, it looks to me like that the 500 plus is a little more than 40. I don't know, might be the way my math teacher thought.
Well, I see that, but I'm doing it for the principal.
Okay. Well, on this road, so when Mr. Montregon reached out to me a couple of months ago, and was, wanted to talk to me about all of this, both of these items that are on here. And it was when Ms. Kirk first came on, and he said, you know, he had been working with Amber, he'd been doing everything, he wanted to get us up to speed. So, because he didn't know, you know, for sure what direction, he wanted to make sure she understood, he reached out to me as the chair. So I went to his office, we sat down, we talked, we got on a Zoom call with the state. That was a lot of information to get all at once. So this has been going on for 12 years or so, and there is 12 years' worth of emails, conversation, everything compiled that was given to me, copies of everything. I can tell you, I understand where you're coming from on, you know, wanting to get things But when something's been going on for 12 years, and all of a sudden, we're going to try to jump into it, when I don't feel like all of, I know that just from what I got in trying to read through that stack, I don't understand everything, and I still have a whole lot of unanswered questions. I'm guessing she probably does as well, trying to catch up. I just feel like it's going to take a little bit to be sure we know what we're doing when we catch up. I know one of the questions that I asked was, and we can take AV if that's one y'all want to talk about. So one of the questions I asked on AV was, so we've had this road built for 80 years or longer. We, Roosevelt County, built this road, we started this road, we have maintained it from day one, before the bombing range came in. They came, they built the bombing range right smack dab in the middle of AV. I mean, AV runs right through it. So they built it on there, and they took their portion out of a road that we built, we had been maintaining, we had done everything. Then, Mr. Dominguez had shared with me that, because when I had asked him some questions, he had shared with me where the fence used to be smaller into the bombing range, and then they took another few miles out of it, of our road, and just fenced it off, and it went to the bombing range. We have had to get all of those, that five things on the list, one of which is an easement to do any of these roads, not only AV, but any of the roads. So if we were getting grant funding for something that didn't even belong to us, that we didn't even have an easement on, how are we getting this grant funding? How are we getting this, this money that we've been putting at the top? How are we getting this, this money that we've been putting at the top of our list on our ICIP, going out and asking for the money on roads that don't belong to us? Our tax, and I asked the gentleman, so our taxpayers built the road. Taxpayers have maintained the road. And now you want the taxpayers to buy an easement to be able to use that road. And then they're going to do the eight million dollars worth of work on this road that the taxpayers are going to pay for to do that again. So the taxpayers are using this and paying for this a million different directions, but they're still the ones that in the end are having to pay again to use what they've been building and maintaining all along. So one of my other questions, I said, what if which one of these roads that we're talking about are bus route? How many of these roads are bus routes? AV's not a bus route. There's several others that are not a bus route. So what we generally do is when we have a road that two or three people live down and it's no longer a bus route, we've stopped maintaining those. So a lot of these, we don't need to maintain, they're not a bus route, they're not a thoroughfare for anything. AV, for example, stops at the Air Force Base, you have to go in the other way to get it anywhere else on AV because it's not even a through road anymore. So I asked him, what if we choose not to do an easement on this road? If we choose not to do one on any particular road? The answer given to me was, then they will go to the landowners around there, correct? And then the landowners will in then have to pay for an easement to that road. So with that all being said, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus or be disrespectful to anyone, but with that being said, AV would be an incredible conflict of interest for you to even vote on because you are the one that lives on AV. And if we don't do an easement on this, that will in turn, you will have to pay for the easement on that. So you would monetarily, in the end, benefit from even any part of what we do on AV. So whatever we choose to do, AV needs to be off the table. Um, or Commissioner Greider does not need to vote on that one. And if any of these other roads belong to any of us commissioners, that it's going to be to one of our properties or one of our houses or anything that we have, then I think we need to speak up now and we need to abstain from voting on that particular road. Because in the, in the end, if we don't do that, the property owners that are out there have to pay for that easement. So we need to be very cautious about what we're doing. So when we're all ready and prepared to go ahead and jump into voting on this particular item, I don't think we all know all of the ins and outs of it. And I don't feel like we all understand exactly what's going on here yet. I would like time to catch up. I realize it's been going on for twelve years, but I didn't know all this for twelve years. So I would like another, I don't, I don't even care if it's a month, I just need a little bit more time before I could even make a decision on the rod count, because I know there was conflict with the different rod counts and different things like that. I, I mean, I'm going to have more when we get to the consideration of the fence. Because I don't understand everything that's going on with this. So my personal opinion, I would like more time and I would feel more confident with our county manager. Not that I don't feel confident with you now, but if you had more time to know what you were negotiating and what we were doing in here. And that's just my opinion.
Okay, I've got to say, before you was ever a commissioner, I recused myself on this road back when.
Okay.
I made a statement that this was, and so we've moved forward with it.
Okay.
So this has been going on way before you was even here.
Okay.
Uh, and as far as we built the bombing range in the mid, or the road in the middle of the bombing range, not true.
No, the bombing range was built in the middle of the road. The road was already there before the bombing range came on.
That's exactly right.
That's what I said.
It was the federal government to come in and took that back in eighty-six.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So, you know.
That's what I was saying.
So therefore it is no longer a county maintained road and they quit maintaining it.
That particular area. Where the bombing range is.
Down to, uh,
Yeah, right where the bombing range is. We don't maintain that anymore.
That's right.
That is correct. We maintain up to it and then from the other side in, but it is no longer a thoroughfare. That's right. That's what I said.
I apologize for having to step out. It was an emergency. I missed out on a lot, obviously.
No, you didn't.
Now I'm a little confused. But one thing that, you know, if memory serves me right, Madam Chair, members of the board, we all have known my concerns, but I'm like, Madam Chair, I just don't know if I'd feel comfortable making a decision today. I'd rather like, I'd like to research it and just see all of our options. Because I don't, I, I don't know. Like I said, I didn't hear y'all's arguments, Commissioner Chris Wells or Commissioner Greider, so, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable even abstaining, to be honest with you, from the vote since I was not in the room, but, um, gosh, I, I don't know.
But I definitely think it's something we need to bring back for, for discussion. I think, even if we bring them back, but I do think it's something we need to discuss further. Sure, you've been in on this from forever.
Well, I know, um, if I can speak, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
They can just, it's not all about just this road over at the bombing range. It's about, down in my district, there's several roads that go through state lease, state lands. And we've been doing, they've been going through there since, since beginning of the county even got their first maintainer with the maintaining those roads, a lot of, and they've built roads since then, all through the years. And it's just hard for me to fathom. Take Lee County. Lee County's got more state leased in country than what we do. They only charge Lee County twenty thousand dollars. They're wanting to charge us forty thousand. That's just one, that's just part of the principle that I'm talking about. Uh, Dubacca County has more state leased state lands than what we do and their roads go through all that. I have yet to turn, they, and I've been told, I know one, and I've been checking on the other, they haven't paid yet. There's nothing going on over there. I just know that I don't want to knock any roads off our deal. I want to still keep these roads. I want to still keep that road. I don't want to just abandon a road just because we need to access, our constituents need access. And the public deserves the access. And if we've been maintaining that road, we still, it's still ought to, we ought to have an easement on that road, just like they have an easement going across my land, my private property, although the county has easements across my country on the, for the roads. And I know, I just, uh, like I say, it's just, uh, there's been a lot of roads that's been improved going across state land, state roads, state land that's been funded. And we've done all the maintenance. And it's just hard for me to, to fathom that there never was an easement, look, you know, there was looked into for an easement on this deal. And now they want to just come, hey, we all need to pay us, you know? And you know, if, if, if somebody was to come up to you and say, hey, you owe me, you wonder why? And that's, I'm wondering why? Why, why now is this starting to be settled? And anyway, like I still, like I say, I feel like it's a wash and always, and always will.
If I may, um,
Yes.
Ebco was involved with this, uh, because I reached out to Amber at that time. And of course Johnny has been there. Uh, it was brought, as you know, the background. So I'm the messenger. And I played middle man between the state land office in Roosevelt County because you're one of the members of Eastern Plains Council of Governments. And we wanted to try to work, to try to resolve this issue that's been going on a long time. I have also found out and have been educated in all this, as you could see, we've been dealing with this since October of last year, I have, in trying to help Roosevelt County. Uh, the, the rod count is a difference between Roosevelt County and, uh, and the state land office. So this is what the state land office, if I may repeat, what they want to do for Roosevelt County is to give you a ninety-five percent discount, a dollar sixteen a rod. Roosevelt County submitted eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four rod count. State land office counted thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five rods. Roosevelt County will owe a one-time fee of forty thousand, three twenty-seven forty and they're discounting one hundred and eight miles. There is a difference, as I just said, what Roosevelt County and state land office submitted on the number of those rods. And this is happening statewide. If you remember, James Borteray, uh, did make the comment that this is happening statewide, that they couldn't help what other state land commissioners have done in the past. Uh, but this is happening statewide, not just in Roosevelt County. So I'd like to see this resolved for y'all's benefit, for state land benefit. Uh, I do intend to travel that road. I brought Julie with me, a regional transportation planner as well, works a lot with NMDOT. We have been invited, uh, by a member of the Marrow's bombing range to drive that road and check things out. I intend to do that. As I said, keep the fencing separate from the right of way issue with the state land office. Uh, we've had, I think, three Zoom calls already. You had a presentation. I don't know what the next step is. Uh, we did get an email from Annette Kirk a couple of weeks ago, Annette, that you wanted to study the issue and come back. Hopefully they could be resolved. My concern is, uh, landowners starting to, after next, the, the year, twenty twenty-five, the beginning of the year, is, as you well stated, Mayor, uh, or Madam Chair, is as, as you well stated, is the, the landowners will start receiving letters. Uh, that they will be in trespass. And so I, I'd like to get it resolved. I found out that this was on the agenda late last night and I immediately, in my office at home, notified the state land assistant commissioner. And, um, but that's where we're at. So what I'm going to do now that I've connected you guys and you're connected with the state land commissioner, with James, with Melissa, Ebco will be stepping back. We will be stepping away from this and we'll let you guys figure it out. I, I've done what I could.
I want to mention something because I, I knew I had remembered it. I would, just wasn't for sure that this is going to be a one-time payment. Uh, my question would be, can a new administration bring back this issue and try to charge us more down the road, or is this something that's, that's like a joint power agreement?
This is a one-time commissioner, a one-time amnesty for Roosevelt County.
And we'll be done with it.
Yes.
Completely done with this issue.
But isn't it only for thirty years? If I'm not mistaken, when I asked him, he said it was thirty years.
Yeah, I don't remember. I, only on my notes here says one-time payment and that's it.
Yeah, but when I asked him if it was in perpetuity and he said they do not do things in perpetuity, it would be for thirty years.
That's a pretty long time.
Was it during his presentation here?
It was, no, it was on, um,
On the Zoom? So, hold on just a second. Only a new created roads for life. He said, no, only a newly created roads for life as long as it's used as a road. Mr. James is on the line. I have him on the line.
So what, but it's not newly created?
It's been a new created roadway.
Does he mean newly created right of way or newly created road?
James, are you there? Let me, the question was asked, is, is this a one-time fee and is there a fee in the future?
Roads.
Okay, hang on, James, can you, James, can you state that again, please?
Sure. For all the current roads that are being used as county roads, it would be a one-time yes.
Move up towards the top.
I think he's, I, James, can you hear me?
Yeah, it, there's a delay. So let me, let me just say it again. So for all current county roads, for so long as they're
He's breaking out, Eddie. Yeah, I'm, I'm losing you a little bit, uh, James.
For so long as they're being used as county roads, what we're proposing is a, is a lump sum payment and it would be in perpetuity. If they add additional county roads into the program, they would also be brought in at a dollar sixteen per rod.
So they are in perpetuity. This is in perpetuity. Because when I asked you last time, you told, you said you didn't do things in perpetuity, that it would be for thirty years.
Only in
And we're in the amnesty program, right? Roosevelt County.
Only in the amnesty program.
So that would be thirty years.
Otherwise, we do not issue rights of way in perpetuity.
And Roosevelt County is in the amnesty program. There's a delay.
No, it's okay. We can just email him.
They're not in and we're trying to get them in, yes.
Oh, okay. I thought they were in. Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, this is something we need to bring back and have them back yet, I think.
Understand that. Are we, or is?
We are not. He's trying to get us in the amnesty program, but we are not in the amnesty program right now.
So the perpetuity is only for the amnesty.
Amnesty program. So it would be thirty years if you're not in the amnesty program, which is what he told me last time. We were not and it was thirty years.
So what's the process, the timeframe to get in this, in this amnesty program?
There's a, there's a delay, so.
We're ready to do it right now.
Well, that's good news. Okay, thank you.
So can we initiate that program, James? That process?
Yeah, it's really just, you're welcome. It's really difficult to operate with this delay.
Yeah, we'll just have them come back and
Yes.
Do it.
Okay, so are you willing to come back one more time?
Or you can do it on Zoom.
We can, or we can do it on Zoom. That's a huge delay. He's willing to come back one more time or Zoom?
But not YouTube.
Yeah, not YouTube. We can do it on Zoom. Or he's willing to come back.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, hang on. So I would recommend you probably table it and listen to it again.
Okay. Is there anything else on that?
I'll move it and then y'all can send it to the table. We don't need any motion to send to the table.
Yes.
So my motion is going to be that we proceed immediately in accepting the state land commission's offer to accept, to acquire the right-of-ways on state land.
I'll second.
Now you can send it to the table.
I just make a motion to send it to the table, to table until?
Next meeting.
And I don't care if it's the next one or the one after, just for later meeting, but I would like for her to gather up all the information that, um, Annette to gather up all the information that she needs. So.
So your motion is going to be to postpone it till the next meeting?
That's fine.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider? No?
I haven't made a motion or anything.
We just made a motion in a second over here to bring it back.
They just, just to bring it back at the next meeting when we get the amnesty information and the other little information. That's needed.
The land office at, at the next meeting. How do you, yes? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, do you wish me to organize that meeting? I'd be happy to.
If you'd like to.
Okay, and I'll coordinate with you, Annette?
Thank you, Raymond. Okay. Item eight B, discussion and consideration of fence project on North Roosevelt Road AV, Commissioner Savage.
Madam President, following the prior discussion, Madam President, I would move to postpone this eight B to the next meeting also.
I'll second that, that'll give us time to really get.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Motion carries. Item nine, um. Oh lordy, we still have a whole nother page. I will entertain, uh, oh, well, we are going to recess at this time. And I will entertain a motion to convene, or we don't need a motion to convene into Board of Canvas, do we? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to convene into Board of Canvas.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We are in Board of Canvas.
Nice part. Alrighty. We had, um, six thousand six hundred and twenty-six votes cast. And then we have three, um, Fwabs, which is federal ballot. They didn't get the whole ballot, they got just the, their military people, they just got the top of the ballot. Um, and those are counted afterwards at your approval. And one provisional ballot. So our total would go from twenty-six to sixty-six? Sixty-six, twenty-nine would be the total. I put sixty-six, sixty-six, but that's, oh, that includes the hand tallies, okay, sorry. Lost my train of thought. Uh, and then thirty-seven hand tallies, those include, um, the, two, two in the mail that were ripped, that could not be run through the machine. And any that were folded that could not run through the machine. So we had a total of thirty-seven that had to be hand tallied. At Dora, we had a hundred and fifty-three. At Elida, a hundred and thirty-five. At Floyd, a hundred and ten. At the Jake Lopez Building on Election Day, eight hundred and eleven. At the Memorial Building on Election Day, eleven hundred and twenty-six. In our office for early voting, twenty-eight hundred and thirty-seven. And at the Jake Lopez Building, early, a thousand and sixty-five. Um, in the mail, we received, um, four hundred and sixty-eight applications. All of those, four hundred and sixty-eight voters received ballots by mail. Four hundred and twenty of those, four hundred and twenty-eight of those were returned. Um, forty were not returned prior to the deadline at 7:00 PM. We have since received one additional ballot back that will not, um, be qualified to be counted as it came after the deadline. Even though it was a voted ballot. Um, we also received, um, two ballots that were issued in the primary that weren't sent back until the general. Those don't count, they just get put in with the other stuff. And we wait, wait for that, um, records retention timeline to pass. And we destroy them in a couple of years. There were five hundred and three same-day voter registrations processed during early voting. Um, most of those were address updates. There were twenty-one ballots dropped in ballot drop boxes. This is the first time all three ballot drop boxes have been used before, we'd never had any dropped anywhere but here at the courthouse. Fourteen of those were at the courthouse, four were at Memorial Building, and three were at the Jake Lopez Building. Uh, one of our ballots was delivered to the Curry County Clerk's Office and one Curry County ballot was delivered here. We've traded with Annie and, uh, we got ours and she got hers. And, um, there's a whole process to that too, with the chain of custody and the fun, all the fun stuff that goes along with election law. Um, so now at this point, we are ready to, um, accept that the results are the results and add those thirty-seven, uh, hand-tallied ballots to the count, bringing our total count to six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Um, if you choose to accept the provisional and two of the three Fwab ballots. One of the three Fwab ballots, uh, the voter was not registered in Roosevelt County that requested a ballot.
What was our percentage of voters?
Uh, percentage of ballots cast, assuming you add in the thirty-seven and the one provisional and the two Fwabs, fifty-seven point twenty-four percent participation.
That was better than last year.
Yeah. We have eleven thousand six hundred and forty-five eligible voters. If you, if you divide that number by the, the active voters instead of by the eligible voters, it's closer to six, sixty-seven percent. Because we have about two hundred that are, even though they're eligible, they don't participate. And we just know this.
Okay.
Um, we had, um, the one contested commissioner race that, um, Mr. Munoz, uh, won. Um, and he apologizes for not being here today, he is in Portland, uh, for his job with the wind farm. Um, but he does plan to attend BIPo and he does plan to, um, participate in the rest of the meetings until he takes office in January. Commissioner Parker, Commissioner like Parker, um, had, I can't remember now, what did I tell you? The, um, anyways, everybody had a pretty good vote of confidence. The, um, Senator, uh, received an eighty-two percent vote of confidence. Eighty-two percent of the people who cast ballots voted for Mr. Boone. Um, everybody's vote of confidence was high between, between the eighty-two, um, and fifty-seven.
Good.
Cool.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Board of Canvas.
You vote after?
We vote after.
So moved.
Tina?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We've adjourned Board of Canvas and we convene the Board of County Commissioners. Item eight, or, what are we on, nine? Nine A, request for the approval of the 2024 General Election Canvas Report.
Madam Chair.
What?
I was gonna, I'll take it. I heard somebody over there.
We gotta make a motion, go back in?
No.
I didn't think so.
We need the motion to, to state though, your intent, you want to accept the provisional and Fwabs as presented?
Okay. That's what.
That's what we'll say, that's what we'll write.
You seconded? All right, that's what I thought. Commissioner Lopez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
And who, first, one?
Paul and Dennis.
Paul and Dennis.
Discussion of RGH event at the Jake Lopez Building on December sixth and request for approval of a private celebration permit application by RGH in Enchantment Vineyards, Megan Hamilton, but it is not Megan.
Megan is in Chicago, so I apologize, but my name is Cassie Self, I'm Megan two point O. And I am her sister, but we are here asking for a permit for Roosevelt Hospital's annual Christmas party on December sixth at the Jake Lopez Building.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll take it.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, may I get that signed now and I will quickly? Is that possibility?
To get it signed?
Yes, ma'am.
It'll be, I'll get it to you in a little bit.
Okay, I have another meeting to attend, may I leave it with you and then I'll come back and get that? Okay.
Who made the motion and who seconded? I motioned. And, did you second that?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Yes.
Request for approval of the summary replat of Track Two and Track Three of the subdivision in Roosevelt County. Viegas?
Viegas, yes. Uh, Effort Viegas has applied for a summary replat of Track Two and Track Three from the Viegas subdivision. It's in the half, east half of Section Nine Township Two South, Range Thirty-five in the Viegas subdivision. The replat is in the, is inside, barely inside the city of Portales, three mile jurisdiction. And more particularly described, it's a hundred and eighty feet from that substation out on eighty-eight, Second Curve. That substation, it's a hundred and, uh, fifty feet west of it. It's that three, uh, four-track acre there. Uh, they're proposing to, uh, replat the two tracks, the remaining two tracks and combine them into one track called Track A. It would be three point four or five acres in size, it's going to condense it, it was. It did have a minimum lot size of one point seven two five acres and it did have a max, maximum one point seven six acres in size, but now they'll be combined into one. Uh, it falls under our Roosevelt County Subdivision Ordinance, Article Six, the summary review process. There was no adverse opinions from any of the utilities or landowners. It has been approved by the city of Portales. The proposed, uh, summary replat has met all the rules and regulations of our subdivision ordinance, so I ask for your approval. I stand for any questions.
I'll move to approve Agenda Item Nine C as presented by Mr. Montiel.
I'll second. Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and consideration of the EOC and Bonham Building renovation proposal and permission to replace fire alarm and remove the fire suppression system. So. Eugene Verbal?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Okay, didn't know what your name was, sorry.
You can go to the microphone, but, um, he has submitted the additional information.
Did y'all all get the copy of our proposal? So, we worked, we started this project with Ms. Hamilton way back in March, I believe. We worked with her to get a design done on the Bonham House and under Sheriff and Sheriff as well to, to renovate the Bonham House and get it into a new, uh, training facility with some interrogation rooms, redo the bathrooms and stuff like that. So we worked very diligently with them to get a design done with the design crew that we had, that we feels very reasonable, he's not like you're some design firms that charge you thousands and tens of thousands of dollars to do things. Um, in going through all of that, we worked very hard to try to fit in the budget, but there was just some constraints on that building that wouldn't let us get down where we wanted. So, is there any questions that y'all have on any of this or concerns? On the constraints of that, there was, there's a, a fire alarm system that's throughout the building. It is a two thousand and six system. The firmware and software is outdated on it anymore, so nobody, we, we found like two people in the state of Mexico that can actually work on it. Y'all have, um, sire, Pirate Troll? Pirate?
Pirate.
Pirate Troll, had a lobby that can work on it or services that I guess once a year. But even their guys can't do any programming to it. They have to outsource that, because I did speak with them. Their recommendation to us was to replace it, because it's so outdated. They said the devices on it alone for just one of the devices is over five hundred dollars. And a normal device is fifty bucks. Yeah, so it's, that was their recommendation. And then I had another project, because, because it is also fire sprinkled due to the, that used to be a at youth, or a youth-at-risk building, is what it used to be. It had fire sprinklers in it as well. I had a project that I spoke with the state fire marshal about and I described that we're changing the type or the category of the building back to a Type B. And that if we could just remove the fire suppression system to avoid having another additional cost on top of everything to bring and change those things into the new platform or the new layout of the, of the structure. And he agreed that that could be done since the category of that building had changed. So that helped to save us another big old chunk of money. We did our due diligence, like we say, to, to utilize everybody from the local area, we sent it out to all the subs and stuff. And I think we got one ITS refrigeration, but they're out of Clovis. Nobody locally really gave us any. And the ones that we did get were substantially higher than some of our other subs that we work with overall. So.
Madam Chair, are we ready for a motion on this?
Yes, if you're ready, I was just reading this.
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm ready to make the motion to approve Agenda Item Ninety as presented by Mr. Barbell. And thank you very much for being here.
Yes, sir, no problem, thank y'all for having me.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, discussion and consideration of letter to, um, President-elect, or I may send it to Karen Budfowen. In support of Yvette Harrell, she's being considered for a Department of Interior position on the committee, so I was just wanting to know if, um, we as a commission could write her a, a, a letter of support. She has been instrumental in a lot of things that we've done. She does a lot with, um, the boards I sit on, the New Mexico Arizona Coalition, the, all the Endangered Species Act, public lands, all of that, she is instrumental in all of those things. And I think she would be a huge asset to our country as well, so I would just like to be able to write her a letter of recommendation and.
I talked to you about it, Tina, I've met with her a few times over the last few years and I think she would be an ideal candidate for that position. She has a lot of wisdom, a lot of smarts, she's got her heart in the right place, so I, I'm in support of a letter. Just speaking for myself, not for anyone else.
Do you have a motion to adopt yet?
We do not, but I would make a motion to adopt. Item nine, uh, nine E, I just didn't know if anybody wanted any more discussion.
Well, I'll second it.
Got a motion? Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Item Ten A, consideration of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four dash thirty-nine, revising the Roosevelt County Emergency Action Plan as adopted by Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash eleven. Mr. Montiel?
Again, hello. Um, requesting approval for the revised emergency action plan, the EAP. This is updating the plan to aim and enhance employee safety and preparedness during various of emergency situations. The primary objective of the EAP is to ensure the well-being and safety of all the employees during emergencies. Chaos and panic can lead to disorientation, emphasizes the need for a well-defined plan that guides employees on how to respond to evacuate and safety. The updated EAP includes a complete range of emergency scenarios, so, such as emergency phone numbers, lockdown procedures, extended power loss, bomb threats, continuations of service are just some of the examples that are in the plan. By addressing these diverse emergency scenarios, the EAP will ensure our employees are equipped with the necessary knowledge and protocols to respond effectively and maintain their safety. I ask for your approval, and I stand for any questions.
A move we approve.
Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and consideration of Resolution Twenty Twenty-four dash forty, revising the Roosevelt County Detention Center Policy and Procedures, Chapter F Detainee Program Section One Program and Services Five A through C as adopted by Resolution Twenty Twenty-four dash fifteen. Ms. Ramsey and Ms. Paulus.
So we have updated our policy on our MAP program. I'll let Chris go over the, the differences in the old policy and then the, the new that she's written.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. There's just a change in verbiage in the mission statement. Our original mission statement said the mission of the MAP Substance Use Disorder Program is to recognize and reduce the risk of post-overdose death and recidivism in our community. There was a little confusion when people asked about that as far as post-overdose, so we just took off the post and left it as overdose death and recidivism. So that's change number one. As we've talked about, we've been in existence for three years now, so we've grown and expanded and learned from trial and error on a lot of things. Our initial eligibility criteria was taken from a couple of other similar programs around the state. So we've kind of modified it and made some changes that, at this point, we have eligible criteria for initial program consideration includes participants must have a substance use disorder diagnosis according to the DSM-Five. Charge information, charges of rape, sexual penetration, or murder will be excluded. And conduct within the facility, persons interested in the program need to have no current disciplinary sanctions to participate in the initial review. So that's our new initial eligibility criteria. Previously, we had just had the same charge information. We had people who were sentenced to Department of Corrections, or rehab would not be considered. We took that out because we do have people that are going to Department of Corrections on like a parole violation, and they're only gonna be gone for a couple of months. And then they're gonna return to our community, so it is beneficial in some of those cases for them to be included in programming while they're in our facility. Prior incarcerations, we originally had persons incarcerated in the facility four or more times within the past three years would be given priority consideration. That isn't really feasible at all, at all times, and sometimes we want to look at those younger people that are just coming into detention and catch you as you're coming in the door rather than have you be in here three, four times within a year to be able to consider you. And then the provider, everyone who's in our program is required to see the psychiatric provider. So that continued to just move to a different section of the programming. And then as we have expanded, we did learn that the misconduct rules for general detainee, general population detainees don't really fit so well with our program. So we have our own misconduct section which has been added. It says attendance in all individual and group activities is required. Three unexcused absences will result in dismissal from the program. Excused absences include court, off-site appointments, sit calls, and visitation. Second one, any physical violence initiated by a program participant will result in dismissal from the program. Number three, any attempt to introduce drugs or other contraband into the facility will result in dismissal from the program. Number four, MAP program staff will review other infractions on a case-by-case basis to determine appropriateness for continued program participation. Number five, participation in the MAP program does not exclude participants from disciplinary sanctions implemented by security staff. And number six, participants on disciplinary sanctions will attend individual and group counseling. However, other program activities will be suspended during the sanction period. So that is our misconduct policy. And lastly, since we have expanded our program, Commissioner Dix, or Chair Dixon, Ms. Dixon, Chair, Chairperson, whatever I want to call you today. Chairperson, Chair Dixon made the recommendation that our participants with some talent participate in the Roosevelt County Fair. And so, taking that under consideration, they actually did, and every one of them that participated placed. And so that was something that was kind of new, unexpected. We had never tried it before. So I did reach out to our grant funder and asked if they would be able to pass a policy within the state system that our participants would be allowed to sell those items, and they have approved that for us. So our product distribution piece is, as part of the MAP program, participants may create original works of art. If the participant chooses to sell an item, a hundred percent of the funds received from the sale would be placed on the participant's commissary account. Should a participant choose to leave items for sale when exiting the program, a hundred percent of the sales from those items would revert to the program to be utilized for non-grant-covered activities. When I initially presented it to our grant liaison, I suggested that a portion of it go back into the program, like Department of Corrections does, where the person who did the activity gets a little portion, the majority goes into the program. And they said with the amount of money that they're, that we're spending on our art activities, they would prefer that a hundred percent went back to our participants. And then lastly, our chickens are definitely producing on an average of three dozen eggs a day. So our participants care for fowl to include chicken and guineas. Eggs produced by the birds may be utilized by program participants as part of food preparation activities, by facility kitchen staff as part of the meal program, or donated within the local area. So those are the proposed changes to our MAP policy and procedure that I request approval of, and I stand for any questions.
Wow. With that, I will make a motion to approve Item Ten B as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Greider?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Um, before I go, we did give you examples of another policy. It's just not listed on the agenda, so I guess we'll just loop back around next meeting for that, unless you guys wanted to do that today.
If it's not on the agenda, we can't do anything with it.
Right, so we have to wait. Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Yep. Ten C, consideration of ordinance Twenty Twenty-four dash three to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds to Blackwater Solar LLC in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifteen million dollars in connection with the proposed solar photovoltaic electric generating and storage project located within Roosevelt County, New Mexico. I thought they said there was no storage.
That's what I was talking, so.
So, correct, the, that sounds like what's being relayed today, that this was the language I was provided by their counsel most recently. So it, it permits them to have a storage component, but it, what they're saying today is that there's not a storage component currently contemplated. So that, that's the reason for the discrepancy.
Can we omit storage?
If you would like to make that amendment, we, we certainly can. Another option could also be to approve it in the form today, and whenever we come back for the resolution, make an update to the IRB documents of the lease indenture bond purchase agreement to provide that, to remove the storage component or make the storage component require additional action by the county to allow that.
Because I think from what we heard in the public that the storage component was caused concern for several people, so I would just like to make sure before we do on that storage portion. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
A move we approved, Ten A, Ten C.
I'll second. Got a motion in, in a second to approve Ten C? Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven A, request for the approval of Twenty Twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant for twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars for salary and benefits. Mr. Montiel?
First of all, I want to thank Carla for helping me with this grant and getting it approved through the state, so thank you for all her hard work. I'm requesting approval and move forward with the Emergency Management Performance Grant, the EMPG, was awarded to Roosevelt County by the state. The purpose of this grant is to hire an additional employee in our department. Of course, the grant provides a salary, local salary and benefits of twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-four with the federal share of twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-four, with a total EMPG obligated award of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight. This funding will allow us to hire an emergency management specialist to assist me in the office. I believe that hiring the EM specialist is essential to success in our department. The additional staff member will help us in more effectively manage our emergency preparedness and response effort. I am confident in this investment will benefit the entire county. I respectfully request your approval to move forward with this grant. I stand for any questions.
Is this one-time monies?
It's one-time. Every year, we have to reapply.
Okay, so what would it cost the county for this employee? What would the county's portion be towards this?
The salary and benefits of twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-four.
That's what the county has to pay.
Yes, and then the state or the federal will, it's a fifty-fifty match.
That includes all the benefits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's, now is this position gonna be contingent on the grant every year?
It will, it will be contingent on the grant, so we have to make sure that we apply for the grant and receive the grant every year. Which, it's a grant that's out there, it, unless you don't apply for it, the rarely you won't get it. It's, it's very not competitive. Just apply and make sure you turn in your paperwork and you're good to go.
Okay.
We could also do a one-year contract based contingent upon the renewal of the grant.
I just wondered if it's in the budget for that.
That's what I wanted, coming out of budget section, so do we have that in the budget?
It looked like she
It wa, it was, it was budgeted for this year, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so it was budgeted for this year?
It was added to the work chart.
It was? Okay, so we had it in the budget and it was added to the work chart. Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve Item Eleven A.
Second.
A motion in a second from a couple of people.
I heard Dennis, he was loudest.
Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Lopez, how do you vote?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, media communication, is the media here? Have anything? We adjourn.
I have had to go to the press.
So we'll just need to remember that